Uh, two oh two. We're here, we're wishing to adopt the agenda.
Aye, would we adopt the agenda as presented?
I second, I'm sorry.
Motion made second by the favor, aye.
Aye.
Any more discussion items? Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget.
Basically, what I can tell you is that we had to make some adjustments because we took out the public safety fee, felt further notice, and so we had, the beginning fund balance was higher than what we anticipated, it should have been about eighty-five thousand dollars, more than we had planned, so I increased that one, very first page, and then we took out the public safety fee, okay, which is on the bottom of that first page, it's number ten thirty-six five five five. Okay. And then, that's pretty much all that we did in the, as far as revenues go, and then on the expenditure side, what I did is in the police department. I, what page do you want? Police department is like, no, they're not numbers.
But it is on the top.
It's on the top, so it's equal.
No, but I mean, they, oh, okay, on the top, not. Well, you might have pulled it all in.
If I did, sorry. All right. Okay.
You know, we got all fun police.
Right. Yeah. So what, what, what I did is I took out that, we increased the actual patrol, we took five thousand out of the lieutenant, we dropped down the chief job to sixty-five, and then down a little bit further, we made some adjustments on the, I thought we were making adjustments on that, the medical, I thought we were dropping that one.
Um, adjustments on the, uh, medical in the nine one one.
Fire, but not on the police, okay. So we increased. So we have the same amount there, just wait, make sure that's correct. Are you sure that's correct?
Mm-hmm, it is. Because we upped the, upped the patrol and then dropped the lieutenant and the chief to make up for what we made and. It's, if you look at it, it's not exactly the same, it's like eighteen dollar, eighteen thousand.
More.
More. It went from five oh eight to five twenty-five.
Five six oh five. Okay, five twenty-eighteen forty, and then.
Oh, I should have talked to you about personnel.
No. Oh, yeah, that part.
Okay, so where are we now?
But what, I don't understand that, because I did that and it's been a few days, so.
So we, we upped to twenty, twenty thousand dollars.
And we took out the public safety fee for a blitz.
Right. Because we took out the public safety fee, which was sixty-five thousand, and then we added in eighty-five that was beginning revenue, right, from this fiscal year.
Right. And then we reduced the chief position, so. That shows the difference on the last page of that, of five eighty-five seven sixty-two to six oh five seven sixty-two. So by having some reductions and adding a couple increases, that's going to be in those numbers.
So everything else in here is the same?
Other than the total, than the general fund, the total, one, in one thousand four forty-four two ten to one thousand four sixty-four two ten. By adding, and then to the revenue side, we've taken out the sixty-five and we've made those two adjustments.
I took, turn, I'm late.
Sorry.
I was actually finishing the review sometime ago. Are we being realistic to hope that we can get a chief at sixty-five from, we struggled to get one at seventy-five?
I haven't had any applications.
Exactly, so, and then if we, and our lieutenant position's new.
Right.
So we haven't yet even filled out once.
No.
And then, and then the patrol that we have is for the four that we currently have budgeted for.
Right.
And then this was to cover, trying to make it more realistic, is that what that is to, so.
You know, if we had to adjust the chief one, take it out of the lieutenant one, you know, if we're okay in the personnel services and not over budget, and those were okay without having to do a resolution, I don't think.
So with the thirty-two increase to current patrols, that roughly giving each about an eight thousand dollar raise?
And we're going to be going into negotiating, so we're, they're asking right now, like, for an additional step plus some different things, so we don't know how to end the COLA this year, you know, we haven't negotiated that yet, or we'll go into this next, sometime.
So does COLA, is it throughout this whole budget, I, and I would probably make, I think, to the original budget, because it's going to be gone in the back, was COLA discussed as being worked into this budget currently?
Right.
Without the changes that we're talking about? So this, these thirty-two is really, if contract negotiations plus what we originally talked about with the public safety fee, would make it more realistic salaries comparable to other jurisdictions for our side, not necessarily comparable to other police force, you know, personnel throughout the county and state.
And I have done some checking, and I was really a bit shocked, I think, because I thought, I'd been told, you know, we're the lowest paid, we're the lowest paid, we're the lowest paid, I think we're twenty cents difference between the lowest paid and this of, and maybe, I'm not bigger paid, so, you know, I think that's always necessarily interesting, after doing lower research. And I think it is just pretty much per capita, and there's a lot of people that start them out at, I think it's eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents or something is what the base wage for the lowest first new hire could be for a police officer, which is.
In towns are similar.
And, and like I said, NISO was twenty cents of higher.
I would have a tough time keeping a chief, although you have, your officers have been on for a while.
Right. But, you know, it's like, is it realistic when you have, I mean, those are some questions we might want to talk about in an executive session coming up or something, you know, I mean, I don't know, because it depends on the job duties, you know, you'd say then, you know, you know, it's always public works, you know, because they do it in a different fashion, they don't carry a gun and stuff, but, you know, they still have to make sure that everything is, the water's good, else we'd be in trouble, you know, but I was looking at that, and I just felt, was really shocked to learn how low they really are for that type of position, you know, and, and I have done a little bit of discussions with our legal counsel for bargaining, and so we're coming up with some maybe better options with the scale, you know, because right now the scale goes, in six months you get a raise. Well, in six months you're not even out of the paddock probably, so why are we given on a raise until you get to a year, or, you know, because they're not on the road by themselves for a year, supposedly, you know, so. Yeah. So those are some things that we'll be talking about. Any more discussions on that?
Will we, um, is there a topic that's correctable, or are there other topics?
It's in there, I mean, that's the one you're looking for.
Well, it's not, it doesn't have the corrections in it that you just made.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the final column.
Mm-hmm. Oh, for the office side, I mean, that's, that's what we put it on, so, yeah, okay. And then we did nine one one changes. So we did take out the sixty-five thousand, we discussed for the public safety fee, and that, what we did is we transferred in from the program support fund that was set up in two thousand and ten, I believe, to help different things, and, and I also put in missile aid income, I upped it ten thou, ten thousand dollars, because we are going to have to start really fighting for every dime through nine one one in the county and trying to get it up where it should be, so, and we've had discussions that I need to set up that meeting with the, you know, government.
IGC.
Yeah.
In the governmental council.
Well, that was my question on, on this one, you know, going from, you know, actuals in the last three years to jumping that high, that we really hope we're doing negotiations over the counter, which isn't a huge amount.
No, because right now the county pays us twenty-one thousand for this budget.
And that's really only fees paid for the sheriff's office, it's not the, it's not them donating to help pay salaries for them, and, and when you look at that monthly summary, usually the county has one they call in the city, so.
So those are a couple things that we're hoping to be negotiating, and I have, I understood that they're ready to help us with that, so, I don't know about the commissioners, but I know that, you know, so.
We need a lot of help now.
We do, and the other thing on them, I did reduce the medical and dental and life, because now that we're closer to negotiations, we know where those, you know, we're concerned that we might have to go to see the county insurance for medical, we won't know that for sure, but I think it's something that will happen, so it's a pretty close option. And basically that reduced the expenditures for personnel services to, from three eighty-eight to three thirty-six, so. Nothing was changed under the materials and services, nothing was changed under their total capital house claim, but it brought us to a balance, but.
So there's, so the transfer in program support is from program support.
Right, that's four, yeah.
To post twenty-four. Which has been fund balance that appears to have gone up over the years because transferring from sewer.
Sewer.
Right?
It's a percentage of sewer and water that goes into that fund.
And it's primarily there to then transfer back out to.
Projects or grants, matches for different things, we put some in the pool this year, and we have been doing that consistently for several years to help support the pool, and then, um. And, and what I'm really going to try to do is just get out there and try to get, so we can start getting some money from the nine one one, we're going to need money, but we're going to have to do.
Or, as suggested by people in the last meeting, we drop it.
Yeah, yeah.
If they had a county, they'd expect that call.
So, they've never had it.
Well, we haven't had it.
They haven't had it, but, yeah.
But I don't know what to do, you know, if you don't get the money, well, and like I said, with that, that money that was there years ago, that was in nine one one eleven, it got added to the base tax rate of the county, as what was did the, um, garbage, the dump side, and.
Now it's dispersed for nine one one.
No, and so the county's still getting that money, which is a minimum of sixty-eight to seventy thousand, plus a three percent increase, and they keep getting it, but they're not giving it to us to run the center, so.
They have an argument, but they, I guess that's bound to be so.
But you know what, I might have got the documentation I did, so that's our next one.
That's, okay.
So, yeah, assuming we can on that one, because, I mean, this is one of those ones where I don't, I mean, I understand now a little bit more, so, just the last couple minutes we've been talking about, you know, take a little bit off the top of the money you receive to put in this fund to then help fund other projects, especially when it comes to grant, matching and kind funds and things like that, but, you know, to take this year one time out of it, not a big deal, but then year after year to take out of it, after this year, our contingency goes down by what we're taking out of it, and then soon that contingency is gone, so, we ultimately, you know, if we're going to increase things, I wonder, we should we have to solve this problem quickly because that contingency will have gone.
Right.
Within two years, within two years of it gone, or then we're going to take more of really a program that should be having the money go out for a different program within our community, you know, just to support a day-to-day function.
So I will be diligently looking at that, I'm excited, but I do have a spreadsheet now, I had Shelley Coulson, I got the information, and then she pulled the number three on the spreadsheet, so now we can go back and have that meeting, and say, yeah, this is, it's pretty clear.
I don't know how soon we could have the EIGC meetings, but as I said, it's probably better to have them sooner, I think that the committee member of my county is Stan Schaller was the last time we met, so.
Yeah. Okay. So I haven't got that set up. But, yeah, it's really pretty cool, I was saying on top of the floor. Okay, and the other change that we did is in the spreadsheet, that was in the computer, there was a hidden line item that didn't show up, and that was on the very well, is that, that's right, and it, what it didn't show was there was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that wasn't showing up, there was another one of those, that just kind of didn't show up on the line item, so it was kind of, so we had to reduce the very well of that. Yes, the last one, or second to last, yeah. So we took, basically, we reduced everything in expenditures from six hundred and thirty-nine thousand to five hundred and ninety thousand, so we could balance the budget.
So this is one of the funds, it seems like it, this council hasn't talked about a whole lot.
There is.
Yeah.
No, yeah, I mean, we have, over the years, but not necessarily the revenues compared to expenses, and when you look at the, just our loan payments, the USDA, I don't mind looking at that loan language on what we could be possibly doing with it, very subtle. So, from what it appears is that we're around two hundred and sixty thou, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand a year in income that comes into the revenues generated by this project, and, you know, forgetting the beginning, beginning fund balance, and then expenses, excluding.
The payments are three hundred and eighty, almost three hundred and eighty, aren't a matter of what, without anything.
Exactly.
So. Well, and Jeff and I have been talking with Darryl and with him about the rates and how to get them where they should be, and we've had a lot of, what would you call it?
We have a lot of.
We have expressed concern.
That we have not been pursuing.
Yeah.
What do you mean by that?
I mean, like, we still have never built Lakeview Gardens, they've been open, you know.
For a year.
Nine months to a year, thirteen months on some of them, we never build head start. We do finally now have the information to start billing them, but they've been open, you know.
A year.
We just didn't get the information, and we didn't get the meters in, in fact, I'm not sure if the meters are still in, we gave the go-ahead, but we didn't even know we were responsible for the meters being installed and buying them until the place had been open for eight months, and then we start saying, well, what about the meters, and Darryl said, well, you're actually responsible for them, which I think was pretty blunderous for us to write a contract that says that we are responsible for that kind of stuff. Infrastructure in their building, they're expanding, and we're paying for it?
And that's how that contract was negotiated, the evidence was before I got here, you know, but it's something we need to, um, we kind of talked about that in the future, if they're going to expand anything, we need to renegotiate that contract some way, so that we are, you know, making a, I mean, you have to make money to pay for, well, we've got that reinjection well down there that's still not working, you know, we've got some major capital improvements that have to be done again, and, you know, we're thinking about, so that is going to be something that we have discussed with both Darryl and Bill, I, I think legal's on the work with it, so, he says you don't have to let them expand until this is, and I guess all we have to do is manage.
At this point, we're not sure we can back bill them for the services they've already received.
Yeah, but there was.
As per the contract, you know, it says it has to be metered, has to be, the meter has to be read and recorded, well, they're still sitting down there in boxes, so.
And the meters installed in the.
You know, one in each of the Lakeview Gardens and one in the new clinic.
Is what, they're supposed to be, I don't, they're in there yet.
They are, they may be.
But weren't they, how much were they, because there were five?
Yeah, we, we were, we're out four thousand dollars for the meters and five thousand dollars to install them.
Yeah.
Well, who was responsible for installing it?
Well, we ended up paying an industrial plumber.
Contractor.
Contractor.
Get and install.
Not just on the head start, but also on the.
Well, the head start, the head start was included in their package, they, they bought their own meter and they installed it, but we need to separate the two, the Lakeview Gardens and the.
It's our responsibility to.
Expansion, yeah, the contracts, our responsibility to buy the meters and install them.
So when they do an expansion, then it falls on our shoulders to make sure that they're, those are.
That's the original contract.
Yeah, and that.
Yeah, it dates way back.
Yeah, and that's not a, that's wasn't negotiated really well, so, that's the other thing I think from the heart, I mean.
Yeah, because this one seems like it could be a problem, real quick in the future, our contingency, the balances are wiped out, and will be ultimately gone, you know, from hundred and five is what the proposal was, but contingency now down to five thousand is like a hundred thousand dollar loss, and.
And what if we have something major, okay, like that one?
Yeah, we can, we can easily.
These are real expenses that are not going to change, unless, like you said, we get that revenue where it needs to be to lose balances, we essentially now created something that's costing us money and not paid off, and not paid off, loan is forever, right?
Thirty-five years left.
Was forty.
Thirty-eight years.
The head start is six years long.
And, and right now, the way that I.
You know, things have to be replaced by the time.
And then every July, you open up a by the COLA, and I'm not sure if it's going to be a two or a four percent, you know, whatever, but you can do that.
We had that option all along, we didn't know.
Well, on the water sewer, right?
Well, on the geothermal also.
No, I've been doing that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have been doing that as far as the COLA on that, but, you know, that's another thing with the water sewer, in one of those ordinances, it says it needs to be increased by the COLA every year, and it hasn't been increased since two thousand and nine, and if we don't get on it.
Which one has the water?
The water and sewer rates, you know, so, yeah.
So on, on this one, it does appear that the rates are, was going up by, from the hospital, but this is only because of the agreed upon through, what, maybe three percent each year?
Because they're named.
Having Times of South, that looks like three percent, a hundred and thirty to a hundred and thirty-three, five is probably around three percent, and then, you know, the school as well, and, but, yeah, the hospitals added on, you know, like you said, I mean, it won't be much, because obviously we're going from a really large structure and just a couple small buildings.
Yeah, there's, there's admin fees that can be added to each one also, and it does create more work when we ever do start billing them.
The number of clients.
But looking at two hundred and fifty-nine thousand in revenue each year and true cost expenses of, I can't think of what I can say, but it looks like three hundred and eighty, right? Why not, no.
Forty-one, there, forty-two plus five.
Is this engineering services, is this just part of how we break down, I'm assuming?
Yes.
To spreading throughout everything, even though you may not get a whole lot of engineering reading?
In the past.
In the past, yeah.
Like in fifteen, sixteen, there was nothing charged to engineer, and he did work.
That was the year that.
So we're trying to break it.
For the plumber.
Yeah, so you know where it is. Because we can't reduce our payment. So, any other questions on that one?
Other than not.
Well, I guess I, I'm still, I'm confused, or just didn't get the question answered, but, so the new clinic and Lakeview Gardens, are the meters installed now?
We've turned them over to them, we've accepted the, the bid from the industrial contractor, but they're.
But, I mean, they're, they're really not using the geothermal.
They are using geothermal water, yes.
Geothermal water, okay.
Just not being metered.
It's not being metered.
So, I mean, can't we just give them a time when this has to be done?
Probably can.
Or we can estimate how much it might use and bill.
Well, and that's what we, that's going from Darryl, and we have not gotten anything, because we said, they've been in there since last year, in the one, the one or both.
The question's been asked by Darryl, who used twenty times.
Well, now, the, the third, um, Lakeview Gardens home, I believe, is open now, yeah, so that's three, so.
Keeps going up as far as usage.
Yeah, exactly, well, and.
Well, maybe what we could do is just ask them to, once they're online, that might speed them up too, they'd want to do it before them. The winter got here, but have them, just tell them that we'll go back and prorate all of the previous months to the first meter that we have, so, if they wait too long, they'll be metered the first month in the winter time, and that's to our advantage, but that might speed them up, I, I don't know.
Right now, I mean, they can delay for as long as they want, as long as we're not putting pressure on them to do that.
Reciprocal of getting back.
Yeah, give, give the hospital a rather, that says, SAKAS.
To go back and recoup those months that they've been using.
Because we have not been able to build them because the meters weren't in, so.
As soon as their contractor, I guess it's their contractor that's going to install it, that's what we've agreed to let him install it into the system, so as soon as their contractor gets off it, I don't know if I can say that, but, as is good even.
Yeah, I mean, and it's up to the hospital to get him.
We could take that metering month and go back and prorate it for however many months it has been functional.
I mean, I don't think we should just sit here and wait.
There seems like there's a solution, we're just.
They can get, yes.
Yeah, yeah, well, there is a solution, but we have to let them know that we're.
In our contract, yeah.
No, I, I think they would, I think the letter is great.
I'm just hoping that actually announces, you know, there's.
Now we're, it's a little better picture.
Because, you know, once, once the winter hits, they're going to be as long a heat as possible.
Yeah, for four years.
Yeah, so.
Jeff, we had some pretty major expenses over the geothermal, very, this last, this last year.
Yeah, we had some leaks and, yeah, so, some downtime and.
Probably wants to rain.
And right now, we're, we're operating in a crippled condition, the reinjection well is now clogged up with scaly buildup on the inside of it, so if we went into winter right now, the thing, it would only function for a few weeks, and then we'll be down, so we're also waiting on the solution to that.
What is the solution to that?
I, I think the best solution for that is to get someone over here to, to blast it with either a detonator cord or some small charges to break it loose and let it settle to the bottom, Darryl is kind of leaning towards filling the thing. Darryl was kind of leaning towards filling the thing up with acid and letting the acid... But, I mean, the thing will take three hundred gallons a minute of water and those go away. So how much acid are you going to put in there to eat that stuff out of there? It's going to be a tremendous amount of acid.
What kind of damage?
Yeah, and, and what's...
And then that acid is going to stay...
What's that going to do, you know, what's...
That's going to stay in the water, which is being recycled.
A thousand gallons of acid in there to eat that off.
That's going to be very costly.
And then there's also, there's mechanical ways to clear those obstructions too. You can go in there and re-perferate the whole pipe, you know, be done in two days by a well driller. I'm just, I think we're going to get unsulfactory results from acid, and I think it's going to take a long time.
But the system's going to be down a while, it's adding.
So I, I think, I'm a quick results guy, you guys, I mean, we could get a powder monkey over here, could blast the thing, put it back together, it either worked or didn't.
And I think that we just need to make sure that we do it, because we cannot just keep waiting and waiting and waiting. And that's kind of where I am right now. That's a mission of...
That's just it, now is the time to do it.
Absolutely.
Because if you wait, then it's going to be too late, and then those guys are all going to be without heat.
Well, I am under the understanding that the Lakeview Gardens doesn't really have a backup heating source. They're totally dependent on us.
Really?
Are they not, are they not also using this heat for cooling as well?
Their system's using it here in their laundry water and their shower.
No, I mean, it's, I mean, it's the air conditioner provides the air conditioning too.
When we were shut down a while back because of that high pressure issue, they ran out of hot water in the buildings. So I know there's no backup hot water.
Well, that was not good thinking.
Well, if, if we get, if we do get a powder monkey in here or whatever, whichever way we go, how long do you think it'll take to do it?
Well, I, I think it could be done in a day or two.
If I contact somebody and get them over there, it's probably a couple of weeks, so it's not...
Yeah, but I mean, that's...
Unless it's like, and we're going to be in hockers.
Well, we need to get on it right now.
I think two or two.
Yeah, I don't, I think, yeah.
I have, I'm coming back some part due on that. One day. I'll go back out there and check with them tomorrow.
Yeah.
So are there any more questions on that? Other than, I've got a lot of...
Like you were asking.
Yeah, and that's all, I think.
Ultimately, we, our stance now is that we can still pull off six officers, increase salaries, do the number one thing, all within the budget without adding anything. If we added it, then we put dollar P, then obviously somebody's contingency lines would be affected.
But I think we can get an officer right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, for a bit. Are we trying to get one now? Yeah, chief.
So ultimately, we built a budget of roughly six hundred thousand dollars for six officers at, you know, the cost for that program.
Hey, no further discussion on the budget, let's move the ag farm totals. We have two. One of them from Dan Becker for fifty-four dollars a ton, and one from Kelly Parton for seventy-eight dollars a ton. Quite a difference there.
And you might have Jeff explain how the ag farm works.
Yeah, that's, uh, the price difference here, they're not buying hay. That's what they're charging us to cut the hay, make it, bale it, and take it off the field. So the lower the price, the better it is for us. We have some history with Kelly Parton. He did it the last couple of years. His was quite a bit higher. This other guy, we don't have any experience with him, but he came highly recommended from the Gallaudet Brunzi Ag Program at the school, so we actually kind of solicited him to bid on it, didn't coach him on the price, but told him that, you know, we should get him involved in it. So I feel pretty, pretty strongly that he's our, by far, our best.
So where is this reflected in the budget? I mean, I'm not sure how many tons we're getting.
Could be in the sewer, sewer budget, you know, roughly the same expense last year.
But at nearly seventy-eight dollars a ton?
Yeah, they paid, they paid seventy-seven last year. A little bit less hay than we're going to have this year, so, but it's going to be within, you know.
If I understand you right, the, the school put in, um, put in a pivot up there.
Not on ours.
No, on ours, I was just on theirs.
The school didn't, the school had no pivot.
I know that, I think, I think it's...
We own the wheel lines and all the irrigation system out there.
They need to put something on the other side to clear.
I think, I must be thinking of the other side.
They may have done that. Did they put something on the other side?
Not that I'm aware of.
Maybe they were going to, huh?
Wouldn't we be better off just to lease that land out where we could get something off of it instead of paying?
I believe that we are not entitled to make any money off of it. All we're doing is getting rid of water. It's not our land.
Oh.
So our, what we get out of the deal is we get rid of our sewer effluent. So, and this, this money that we're paying here, it's like a fee that we're paying to the school to allow us to put our effluent on their field. So we got out from under some pretty tight constraints a few years ago, quite a few years ago, to stop dumping water on a regular basis into Thomas Creek. So this was the, the answer to it. So not really in the hay business. This is just a side effect of the agreement that we had to make to get where we are now, successful.
I mean, I'm...
DDQ permit, which is no small one.
Ag farm expense.
Yeah, and that's what we baked out, you know, we put the...
So really, at forty-five hundred bucks a year to get rid of our water, it's not...
Yeah, and we have quite a bit more than that into it overall, because we use some of our regular sewer budget to, to pay the guys for moving the wheel lines and whatnot. We had a couple of years, right at the very beginning of it, where school kids were moving it, and we were paying them. So we were still, had an outlay of money, but it was really super inefficient. We made a lot of damage to the structure, so I think, you know, by the time you figure an hour in the morning and hour in the afternoon, we're better off doing it ourselves, or leasing it completely out, like you said, which would be my best option. At some point, we could get changed over to that. You know, we, it would be an agreement we would have to hash out with Christie Reeves and the ag program and, you know, probably the school administrator too. We could probably, could arrive at something that would be agreeable with him and us.
It'd be nice.
At no point, I don't think we'll ever make money off of this, and that's not really our point.
Just to get rid of our water.
Get rid of our water.
On the, Howard, how is it gate, Department of Agriculture? I mean, if, if, if somebody says we, this might, we'd pay more.
Um, I'm not sure I understand the question, how is that? They don't want us dumping any water into Thomas Creek.
No, 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 I'm speaking of, of the hay itself. I mean, we're paying, we're paying per ton.
Yeah.
But, you know, if, if somebody tells us there was a thousand tons, you know, just sort of figure out. But how do we know that that's actually what came off of that field?
I don't know.
Department of Agriculture, is that?
No, no, it's, it's done by Christie. She weighs the veils.
Okay, okay.
And then it takes an average of them, takes them and actually weigh them on a wheel, actually scale, times the number of veils they created.
Okay. And then the school sells those veils a pay to someone, but we take care of it, we can.
Yeah, yeah. Your contract with them says we're responsible.
Yeah, we've been doing it for a long time, I think.
Yeah. It was originally set up when it was built. We used the school's ag farm because there wasn't any other property available. There was some property available when, where the solar panels are now. They wanted three hundred and something thousand, but that was only years ago. So we used the school ag farm. It was originally set up to be a classroom project too for the ag kids. Keeping track of the hay, water, the application, nutrient loads, the things like that. And we had a little, I guess diplomatically, we had a little trouble with that. It depends on who the ag teacher is. And whether they want to do things like that. Probably with the ag teacher now, it probably a little more gets done, but... So it, it had varying success, and I think the town's kind of ended up at this point, because we have to, we have to have some place for the water. Small price to pay.
Yeah, pretty good, yeah.
It would be a great school project, because most schools don't have an ag farm to work with. And this is a real blessing for school district numbers that still may be so, things that can be worked on.
So this is also in a regular session?
This is the life deduction on what you want to do as far as this one to get to the regular meeting?
Would you want the proposal in a regular session? Okay, we'll move on down to Lake of Oregon Cities legislative priorities for two thousand nineteen. I went to this, and I don't know, you guys just got it, James?
Well, I, I looked at it. I didn't read it word for word, and I picked out a few things that, but I would like to just read through it more thoroughly and like put on our agenda for our next meeting and decide.
When do they need to know by?
On this, for Congress, third, third.
So we have some time. I'm trying not to forget.
Pretty much all my...
I can review it, yeah.
But, yeah, because you can only pick four, and there's...
There's a good number of them.
There's, uh... Yeah, yeah, and then twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, finish the choose.
Just try to weigh it.
And you only choose four?
Just try to weigh it and see what...
But anyway, that's, um, because there's, there's explanation up there, one of them, and that...
You can go to a table that gets back to me, or wherever you want to do, and we'll give you the data. Okay, and then just this, I think I don't want to forget, in the back of the regular agenda, I put in the LOC ninety-third annual conference information. It's going to be September twenty-seventh through to twenty-ninth, and I wonder if you guys come up, are you there yet? The better deal, the better... Mike, it's in Eugene.
I tried to go last year too, but the conflict came up, so I couldn't go.
So...
I would, I would love to go.
And I'd like to get you guys registered. If you have a little bit of time, you can still get one back, but the sooner I get you in line, get a room, we'll still...
We'll see what, I think, yeah. Let you know in August.
Okay, but I'll get you... Okay, Mike, get registered for the LOC, okay? Just Mike, so...
What time do we find you?
It might be, oh, I knew, the agenda was in our...
I didn't put the agenda, I put the series, they had to be there about four.
Yeah.
Urban renewal is how you can...
On your six, I don't know what else. But yeah.
Anyway.
Sure, what do they do to them, like, maybe? Do they make it work? I can't believe it. That car, you know, it's having to be there, so.
Thank you, Alex.
Okay, no, yeah. And I know we may, yes, we have to...
Well, at least, uh, that was about seven, I think, but still can affect workers, but everybody else is...
It's still... Deposit.
So that's the thing, and now we can actually pay credit card payments on the phone, at the process.
Yeah, that's what the school...
You have, you have to give us a check.
On that, what are the emergency patients? Down here, all the public safety feed.
Just if you wanted to discuss it further, it's a case of from last meeting, so it's entirely on, because I don't have to do it.
Because this, this is going to be on, I know what you would, but say absolutely no way.
Well, I think we talked about having a meeting in the evening.
We did, we're sending the public, we're sending the public.
Yeah, I think we should. And that would be so better idea.
And I hope they do it on you. All the happy to get, okay? So like, so I'm...
We still, like, what, like in a week, in a day?
No, I'm just going to say, let's get to two different weeks. You're going to be gone, I would.
I'm going to be on the, to the... Out of town.
But it might be good after that, and that way we're going to make sure, make sure it's on the, the... And we talked about...
I, I don't have to be here on this one. I mean, it can be a work session thing, where you're taking public comment, but you're not making a decision, and then I'm just... And then come back and draw a regular decision. That following meeting, the second meeting in July, and then, I'd say hold it before, you know, I'm going, that's fine, because I don't...
Because we could have it on the third, second meeting, and then add it on the third, and then go back on...
On the third of July?
No, third Tuesday of the month.
Oh, okay.
Not meeting?
Wait a minute, that's a...
If you did on the second, then you could come back a week on that third, regular third Tuesday. No, we're on the...
The fourth.
Yeah, so if you have it on the third, then we have our information.
I'll be in planning commission on our, so, but I'll be back in town, so if we end early, I'll come live.
Okay, and I'll put it at six o'clock, and we'll get notes to send.
Yeah, that's the exact same time as the planning commission meets, so...
Well, um...
For me.
Should you do it?
If you did it at seven, then I could probably make it.
Okay, I don't care.
I think seven is a good time, because a lot of people just go home for dinner, and then, then don't, you know...
The meeting, depending on how you structure, invite people to show up, you don't have to hear the same comments from everybody. We're just saying, all right, who's going to show up in opposition, all in favor of opposition? It'd be simple, you have five hundred hands.
Well, but if we're, we're asking for public comment, then we might have contacts.
No, I know, but I mean, they might, they might also have the same comments. And they might have this one, kind of, something like that. All these same people have signed this saying they don't want to do it.
So I will get that out, I will have it, we should have it on the... The third, Tuesday, July.
Seven, what's the song?
At seven, and seven, we've got...
You have three of one right there.
Fifteen hours.
All right, uh, as of right now, the work session is adjourned at, uh, three fifteen.